Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, December 20, 2021. I have a meeting announcement. Council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue to join us, to join virtually, as there are a limited number of seats in available in council, although I think that's changing, so we'll have to rewrite that. But residents are always welcome to join us in chambers as well. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one to be presented, and we're waiting. Oh, I'm sorry, the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment, standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to say during the moment of silence, please keep Willa Mae Holt in your thoughts and prayers. She was a city of Pittsburgh employee from his 40 years, resident of Shorter City, and she passed away last week. Thank you. Okay. Our next order of business is proclamations. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that clarification. I have one to be presented. However, I'm waiting for someone to run it up to us, and so we'll get that started in a second. But I have one to be read into the record by, for Councilman O'Connor. We'll start with that.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill 2368. Yet further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 11, 2021, to be Thomas Trip Conric Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
You have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? On, did I say, oh, in favor? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation. Thank you. I'm on a little rough start here today. I'm waiting for my proclamation to be brought up here, but.
You can ask for the motion, can't you?
Pardon me?
You have to have it in your hand for us to approve it.
I'm trying. Do you have it? Okay. Well, David Hughes and family, please come forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't know there was a pre-presentation. I thought it was read the record.
Can you come up here? Can they come up here? Sorry. How are you?
I'm good.
I hope to see you up here one day with this in your hand. Okay? So I just want to say what a remarkable young man, David Hughes is. I read about him. I've known his mother. I've read about him when he, when he helped when there was a fire in Elliot, and I'll read the proclamation, and you'll see why. David Hughes is not your typical 13-year-old. And whereas, instead of spending his time with his friends, he loves to spend time with his papap to learn how to work on cars and to be a handyman around the house. He enjoys learning practical things and acting upon what he has learned. And whereas, he also enjoys helping others and takes care of his elderly neighbors by cutting grass in the summer and removing snow in the winter. He does it as a volunteer, and it's just being kind. And whereas, on Tuesday, November 23, David was at his pap's house in Elliot when a fire broke out in the neighbor, in a neighbor's house. He noticed the flames and heard the woman screaming for help. Upon closer look, he saw a woman wrapped in a blanket that had caught fire, standing on the roof. And whereas, David immediately told his pap he needed to get to a ladder to get his, to get his neighbor off of the roof, and he called 911 as he was running for the ladder. He also tried to get the ladder to her, but it was too short. The woman jumped to the ground and escaped the flames as the emergency crew that David had called had arrived. And whereas, he is not, when he is not saving lives or helping others, David can be found playing baseball for Elliot West End Athletic Association, where he grew up, and playing football for North Gate Middle School, where he currently attends the 7th grade. And whereas, David attends Living Word Ministry on the North Side and likes relaxing with his three dogs. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend David Hughes for his community service and his bravery and his quick thinking in order to save a life. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 20, 2021, to be David Hughes Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
In a second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Congratulations. Here's your real proclamation. You just say here, let you say a few words. Take a picture and a comment for our clerk, but here, do you want to say a few words? Why don't you have to say something?
I thank you guys.
Come up here. You know I'm not going to let you go to words, Dana.
I thank you guys for thinking of David, to honor him for this. He really blew my mind when I got the word, when I was at work, and then I seen it on the news. I said, he did it. He loves to help people, so I wouldn't think nothing of him but to do it. Thank you again.
And if you know his mother, you know where he gets it from. So let's take a photo right there. Okay, and our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matter of concerns, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. We have the first speaker, please, and the first speaker I have registered is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bells Hoover, and I have a residence in Cheyenne, Wyoming. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. The Global Intelligence Society is an organization for the exploration of practical policy applications, of the evolution of global intelligence out of general intelligence. The concern of this council is not forgetting us, citizens. Yo se que no te olvidare. Can any of you councilors, or Mr. Ganey, communicate in Espanol? And if not, why not? I think you should make an effort to engage with thousands of our people in the second language of this city. So take a few lessons if you don't already know or can communicate in Spanish. Intelligence is the ability, in my view, to induce and deduce generalizations via information. Espanol is the language, which is the core of the South and North Latin American Intelligence Month, January 2022, copyright RL Molinaro, 2010 and 2020. Intelligence comprehends, in my view, racial and regional identity more evidentially free of bias than, say, history, Black History Month, White History Month, the Latin History Month, like that. Haza is the Harsha of African Intelligence Month, February 2022, copyright RL Molono, 2010, 2020. And Nihongo is the Kotoba of Asian Intelligence Month, March 2022, RL Miror, 2010, 2020. And Deutsch is the Sprache of European Intelligence Month, April 2022, again copyrighted RL Mueller, 2010 and 2020. Noté olvidare. Yes, I will do anything for you. You see, I'm quinnying on this. That is to say that translations are not perfect. That's Gloria Estava. Two ways.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Please begin.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. The Pennsylvania Constitution states, under political power staff, all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where public servants, who have been elected by us, get the idea they're lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? The PPS Board and Administration created a controversy against us. There have now been three community meetings with Gregory Coyle. It is eight months of no community support from Bonner. We even gave him a petition with 250 signatures on it. We want the building torn down and a green space to take its place. Gregory is operating in bad faith, and the school district officials are harming we, the people of Bonner. We have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that any American will make is in their home. Our biggest assets are being threatened. The oath of office holds all public servants accountable should they ever violate, infringe, or deprive us of one of our God-given constitutionally protected and guaranteed rights. The Pittsburgh Public Schools, Administration and Board, and Gregory Coyle are causing negligent infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting by their opposition to our community. These are real damages that the people of Bonner demand remedy for. Negligent infliction of emotional distress is a personal injury that arises when a defendant acts so carelessly that he or she must compensate the injured person. Has City Council taken any steps toward a resolution to protect the Bonner property owners from enemies that continue to harm us? My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bonner's school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Investigate fraudulent acts by PPS Administration, Board, and contractors. Oversight is needed to avoid bad actions like poor roundabout placement. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ikona Halmackina. Ikona Halmackina. Last time, Ikona Halmackina.
Greetings.
Greetings. Please continue.
Thank you. My title is Ikona Halmackina. I am the Grand Inca of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indians. I came before City Council asking me to take action to create safe spaces throughout the City of Pittsburgh for Indigenous American People. According to your own city charter, which is subordinate to the Pennsylvania Constitution, which is subordinate to the U.S. Constitution, which states in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians, not Taks, meaning to not be counted, meaning not to be censured, meaning not to be erroneously enrolled into your system. As a teenager, I've always found it, the subject of history, to be intriguing and extremely interesting, so it made me curious to find out more about my own lineage. Since a carefully orchestrated narrative taught in schools seems gloomy, dark, and grim for the people called Negro, Black, and Color, because history only teaches those people that they are descendants of slaves. At a tender age of 14, I went to my grandmother to inquire about our story. After a series of questions about slavery turned up empty, she gently explained to me that we were not Black. I was shocked. As she continued to explain our indigenous roots, her father, a Cherokee man, her mother, a Creole woman from Louisiana. It wasn't immediately exciting. Instead, I was confused and curious at the same time. I would never forget that conversation. Fast forward 20 years of research and development, I've found the hidden confirmation that I've always knew, that my grandmother, not that I've ever doubted it, was telling me the truth despite the narrative that I was taught and that was forced upon me in school, in other social organizations, in other eugenics programs via the mechanism of eugenics, Franz Boles, Melville Hertzkowitz, Walter Ashby Plecker, just to name a few. Our peace, safety, and happiness and liberty have been interrupted. It is time to honor Aboriginal Indigenous American People and our rights for this is our land. We are asking City Council to act in good faith and create legislation slash resolutions to give us unrestricted access to our land and resources. Thank you and have a good day. Peace, light, and love in la que la que in, in the words of my ancestors. Delight in me honors delight in you.
Thank you and have a good day. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address City Council?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, Apartment 316. That's up in the Hill District. I came today because I was really upset when I heard on the news, 90.5 AM is, FM is the station that I listen to, and it is dynamite, because it brings out things that we as citizens, even if we watch your Zoom, we can't see. But I want to start because I'm really upset with Mr. Coghill. I heard you say that you were not going to agree about the police because very few incidents of the police. Well, as a council person, you should listen to the news, and maybe if you and Mrs. Gross wouldn't be talking when citizens speak, you, you would hear. And you, Mr. Coghill, stop coming out here. You're supposed to be at the table. The people can't see it. You come out, people will be speaking, and you sit there and talk, or you come out. That's not for you to do. You're supposed to be at the table, up at your desk. And I say it because, you know why I say I've been coming here 27 years, and we had council people before, them older ones, they showed respect, and you could shame them. You can't shame me. Can't shame you at all. But I want you, you, to see. All these people have been killed by the police, and they say, and way too many more. My son's name is not on there. They wouldn't say he killed, they killed him, but they left him on the floor. Five white men while he was saying, I can't breathe. Every time I hear and I see a black man on TV dying, getting ready to die, when they're saying, I can't breathe. What gets me is that my son was there and he knew he was going to die. That's why he was crying. She called and said he was crying. Man, I have one love. Let me tell you something about the police. At one time, I really thought that all police were bad. They treated us like we were dogs. My son lived on the North Side, and I came up to see him, and he was at the police corps. Okay, so they ended up pulling away, and I said, were they messing with you? And he said to me, Mom, no, all police ain't bad. We got the rogue. You know what a rogue one is? One that does what he wants, when he wants, and gets away with it. You, Mr. Coghill, you're a businessman. I think you forgot where you came from. You may have a business, but you're supposed to deal with all of us and not be shaded by the police because you know them and live around them or whatever. They make mistakes too.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And that exhausts our list of speakers. There's no one else in the audience registered wishing to address City Council. That said, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Parks and Recreation. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2357, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding From the URA for In-Wright Park Improvement and Further Providing for an Agreement and/or Use of Existing Agreement and Expenditures at a Cost Not to Exceed $1 Million.
Thank you. And Councilman, you have a motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 2357?
Yes. Motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 2357.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The bill appear on the Standing Committee meeting on Wednesday. Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2358, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring $1,500 to Hilltop Alliance Within District 3 Neighborhood Needs. Bill Number 2359, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 93, Providing for an Agreement, Contracts, or Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the City Council Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District 3, and Providing for the Payment of Costs by Transferring $1,500 to the Hilltop Alliance. Total cost of all District 3 Neighborhood Needs Project is not to exceed $51,943.77.
Madam President.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
May I please waive the rules of council on 2258 and 5923?
Yes.
So that they may appear on Saturday's Standing Committee agenda. They are to distribute.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The bills appear on Wednesday's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2360, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Law and/or the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City in Full and Final Settlement related to Litigation in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to accept $325,000 to issue a warrant in favor of Beth Ann Butler and Charles Butler and their attorneys totaling $5,000 for the purchase of certain property, and further authorizing the execution of a D and other documents as needed to complete said property purchase.
Thank you. And Councilman, you have a motion to waive the rules of council as well?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on Wednesday's Standing Committee meeting agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers. No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2361, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 CDBG Program, the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Allegheny West by $7,530, reducing Cameron Welch Youth Baseball by $2,970, increasing Community Alliance of Spring Garden East Dochtown by $10,500, and authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill Number 2362, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget, the 2017 CDBG Program, and the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Allegheny West by $6,000, reducing Brighton Heights Senior Center by $2,500, increasing Community Alliance of Spring Garden East Dochtown by $8,500, and authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill Number 2363, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget, the 2018 CDBG Program, the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing St. Ambrose Manor by $6,000, reducing District 1 DPW Projects by $12,270, and increasing Community Alliance of Spring Garden East Dochtown by $18,270, and authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill Number 2364, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget, the 2019 CDBG Program, and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Historic Dochtown Development Corporation by $5,000, increasing Community Alliance of Spring Garden East Dochtown by $5,000, and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules so this appears on our Standing Committee agenda this afternoon on bills 2361, 62, 63, and 64.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor? Any discussion? Oh, in favor? The bills appear on the Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And I have myself, Chair of Hearings, have two resolutions to be presented. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2365, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 549, entitled, Providing for an Agreement or Use of Existing Agreement and/or Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program, and Providing for the Payment of Costs by Transferring $2,700 within District 1 Neighborhood Needs for a District 2 Project. Bill Number 2366, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $2,700 within District 1 Neighborhood Needs for a District 2 Project.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
May I make a motion to waive the rules of council on 2365 and 66 so that they may appear on this afternoon's Standing Committee agenda?
Thank you, Councilman. And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to thank you, Councilman Wilson. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on today's Standing Committee agenda. I keep thinking it's Wednesday. Today's Standing Today's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. We will now move on to any unfinished businesses or any unfinished business before council. Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilmen, we'll begin with Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2351, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for December 15, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1846, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the City Code to Require the Confirmation of City Council for Deputy Directors and/or Chiefs, Assistant Directors and/or Chiefs, and Other Enumerated Positions in the City Code. Bill Number 2147, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article III Organization by Adding a New Chapter 141, Offices Generally to Establish the Office of Immigrants and Refugee Affairs. Bill Number 2152, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022. Bill Number 2153, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2022 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation thereof and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill Number 2154, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 CDBG Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Bill Number 2155, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations and Salaries for Stop the Violence Fund for the 2022 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022. Bill Number 2168, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2022 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill Number 2169, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption by Fixing the Rate of Real Estate Taxation for 2022. Bill Number 2170, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption, Section 26302, Payment Options, Discounts, and Delinquency Penalties, so as to set the Payment, Discount, and Delinquent Dates for the 2022 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2171, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246, Home Rule Tax, Section 24603, Declaration and Payment of Taxes, Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2022. Bill Number 2172, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245, Earned Income Tax, Section 24503, Declaration and Payment of Taxes, Subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2022. Bill Number 2268, Ordinance Amending the City Code, Section 1778, to include certain definitions as they pertain to the scope of review of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. Bill Number 2269, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 601, which authorized the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into an agreement with the American Association of University Women in order to conduct a work-smart training program as part of a pay equity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the term of said agreement at a cost not to exceed $39,959. Bill Number 2270, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Brian Dugan in the Amount of $3,345.34 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Stop Vehicle from a City EMS Vehicle on April 24, 2020. Bill Number 2274, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incurring of Non-Electorial Debt Through the Issuance of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount $64,655,000. Bill Number 2275, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a License Agreement with Oak Moss Consulting LLC to Allow the Performance of Due Diligence Investigations and Pre-Development Planning on Designated City Property in order to Facilitate the Construction of a Mixed-Use Commercial and Residential Development in the Hazelwood Community. Bill Number 2276, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city to enter into a Grant Agreement with Allegheny County for the Receipt of the Coronavirus Funds in the Amount of $50,000. Bill Number 2277, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 714, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance, Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services, and/or Data Collections Activities as Associated with the 2021 Emergency Solutions Grant, Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,214,418, to Include the Allegheny County Housing Authority as an Additional Signatory. Bill Number 2278, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations, Salaries, and Capital Expenditures of the Parks Trust Tax Fund for the 2022 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022. Bill Number 222331, Ordinance Amending the City Code Title II Fiscal Article 11, Dedicated Funding of Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund, Chapter 272, Dedicated Funding for Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund to Extend the Parking Asset in Additional Five Years.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Kraus.
Madam President, thank you. We have a number of amendments on the bills. If the sponsors wish to present.
Who's presenting? We have.
Sure. Well, I thought Reverend Burgess was first, sorry. Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Lavelle.
If we don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill 2152, 2153, 2278. I'm doing them all at the same time because essentially, these are just getting our budgetary numbers in line.
We have a motion, we have a second? Any discussion?
What did I say? 2278, I apologize. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We always second it. All in favor? The bill's approved and/or amended, I apologize. Bill's amended. And then, we have any other amendments?
Yes, Madam President, I have amendment by substitution on Bill 2021, 1846.
Second?
There's a motion.
Discussion, please.
I want to.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Councilman Kraus because he is the, his suggestion, I follow his suggestion and talked to our acting solicitor who happened to have an attorney listen to our meeting on Wednesday and asked them to rewrite the legislation with all our concerns. The Law Department did that, returned it to us on Thursday. I emailed a copy of this to all members of council and the Law Department's reasons for changing it. So these, this legislation as it exists now was not, it was, it is the Law Department that has forwarded this copy of it, and all of you should have, in your email on Thursday, gotten explanation of why they did what they did. So, and I want to thank all members for your participation. Also, I emailed on Thursday a copy of this to the Gani Transition Team and had follow-up conversations with them afterwards to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Thank you, Reverend.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilmen. Just, I'm going to read briefly the changes that were made to, I forget the, which section exactly it was last time. I think it was only Section G, which sort of gave us all some pause. The amendments are as follows. As provided for in Home Rule Charter, each head of an executive department or administrative unit other than the offices of the mayor or controller shall be subject to the approval of council unless the charter states otherwise. Section H is notwithstanding any contrary provision of the Pittsburgh Code of ordinances, any deputy director, deputy chief, assistant director, or assistant chief hired to serve an executive department or major administrative unit listed in subsection 11101 shall, as a condition of their continued service in that role, attend the first regular meeting of city council following their hire wherein the council may forward said individual to ascertain fitness to serve through interrogatory. The mayor shall provide notice to city clerk of the attendance of any such individuals prior to the applicable regular meeting of city council. And section I, no persons shall serve as an acting or interim assistant director or deputy director of an executive department or major administrative unit for more than 90 days without having attended one regular meeting of council. Following their appointment wherein council may call forward said individual to ascertain fitness to serve through interrogatory, the mayor shall provide notice to city council of the attendance of any such individuals prior to the applicable regular meeting of city council. I would like to add that one of the things that sort of gets lost in discussion when council considers is that we can always reconsider. We, 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 none of us enter any agreement or engagement hoping for it to malfunction, right? But sometimes there are the unintended consequence, right? So, so I will support this today. I will support it, as I said, on whatever day was it Wednesday? I guess last week, we talked about it in the, in the light and spirit of transparency, not, not just to this council, but to the public at large, who we serve and who the new members of the administration are going to be, and the qualities that they bring to public service. So with that, I appreciate Councilman Burgess's willingness to adjust. I appreciate, as always, our Law Department for their expertise in assisting us with this, and I will vote in the affirmative today. Thanks, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus. Any other members? Councilwoman Gross.
There we go. Yes, thank you, Madam President. I also was giving it some, some reading here, and I, I want to acknowledge that some of the questions that I had last week were also addressed with this amendment. So, it does not require acting directors to immediately cease their functions, which the language last week had. And so that language has been removed. I really appreciate that because it would have really disabled core functions as we head into winter. And we have a great number of department heads of major units of government that are acting currently. And so it gives 90 days, and I think that is reasonable to, to expect. It also gives council the option of interview instead of the requirement so that the acting directors can continue to function, don't have to step down, but also it doesn't demand an interview for them to continue their job. So that, that shall, has been removed in a different place than we first identified it, but it says that the, sorry?
Sorry.
It says that the acting directors must come to council meeting and council may interview, but it doesn't require that interview for them to continue in their position. So I find that a reasonable compromise. And it certainly does not require council approval. So it is amended quite a bit from its initial language, and I do appreciate that. So this way, we get to have a public conversation where we deem it to be warranted in order for us to get to know the acting directors or the deputy directors in order for the public to see or meet the acting or deputy directors, but it doesn't require it so that we don't interfere with the day-to-day functions of the city. So I'm happy to also vote it through and then look to see how it works, as Councilman Kraus pointed out, and we have the ability to amend if needed. Thank you.
Anyone else on the amendment?
I just wanted to register I votes for all of these amendments, these bills, and all future bills at today's regular meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Any other members? Seeing none, well, I'm just going to say thank you to Reverend Burgess for always willing to work with people to negotiate to get to a place where we can compromise. And I mean, it shows a true sign of leadership that you are willing to compromise on things that you're passionate about. And, and I just want to say, I think that the administration so far has hired people that I think have been very helpful to us and willing to work with us. So I have no doubt that they're going to continue down that path, but it's good for the public to know and to see who it is that's going to be working for them. But that said, do we have a roll call vote on the amendments? I'm sorry. Yeah, we're voting on the amendments.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Madam Clerk. I just said roll call. Okay. Do we have a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now, roll call vote for the bills. Madam, any discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak briefly about the fee schedule because you and I spoke about it last week at Standing Committee. And I did check, and I think your suggestions are wonderful to really look more deeply at how we are creating an obstacle to our communities having actual community events, which we want to encourage them to do, but that our fee schedules may be discouraging them to do, actually making it cost prohibitive, which is completely anathema to what we want to happen. So we have this version here, but we are able to amend it in January, so it does give us some time to make sure, it has to be revenue neutral, but I checked with our budget office, and if, as long as it's revenue neutral, we can do the amendment in January. If you're up into it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's the concern. I still have a concern about it because I'm afraid that we won't be able to amend it come January because we won't find it to be revenue neutral, revenue neutral. Any other members? So I, I just, on the same subject, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no today on that one bill, but, because I do think that we are preventing people from doing some of the most amazing things in the city of Pittsburgh instead of partnering with them, we're making it very difficult. So I'm going to vote no on that bill, but all other bills, I'll vote in favor of. And, and I do think that, I want to say that the administration has always worked with us and helped us to get to a place where we could have, host these events, but I don't think that's what should be relied upon. I think it should be the public has one set of rules. With that said, Madam Clerk, please call the room for the votes.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
No on 1846, aye on all bills.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye on all bills except Bill 212168. I vote no.
On 2168, there are... On 1846, ayes, eight, one, no. On 2168, eight ayes, one no, and all other bills, nine zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you so much, Louise. You're doing a great job filling them. And that brings us to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2352, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for December 15, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2174, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title V, Traffic Article I, Administration, Chapter 503, Enforcement and Control by Adding a New Section 50317 Equitable and Fair Enforcement of Motor Vehicle Laws. Bill Number 2279, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh for Services in Connection with Humane Detention, Care, and/or Euthanasia of Domesticated Animals at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,125,000. Bill Number 2280, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into a Professional Services Agreement with Lexi Poll LLC for Software Subscription-Based Policy Management and Training Services at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $436,049.67. Bill Number 2281, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Data Use Agreement with the Center for Police Research and Policy housed within the University of Cincinnati. to engage in a process and outcome evaluation of training and technical, technical assistance as part of the academic training to inform police responses initiative. Agreement shall be at no cost to the city. Bill Number Twenty-two eighty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter into a corporation agreement with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for a tele-visit pilot program. Bill Number Twenty-three thirty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Public Safety to enter into a license agreement with the city of Greensburg on behalf of the Greensburg Volunteer Fire Department and no cost for temporary use of a city of Pittsburgh fire truck due to a recent accident that has left Greenburg without a operational fire truck for an indefinite amount of time. Bill Number Twenty-three thirty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Council of the City to promulgate guidelines to be followed by city police officers when making a warrantless arrest pursuant to forty-two PA as required by thereunder as, as required by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Burgess?
Yes, um, I want to make a motion to recommit Bill Twenty-one seventy-four. I've had extensive conversations. Let me make the motion.
I'll second with discussion, please.
I've had extensive conversations with Councilman Coghill. He wants to have a more extended conversation about the bill. I'm, I am willing to have an extended conversation, but I am unwilling not to pass it by the end of the year. So he wants to have one more conversation this afternoon. I'm not opposed to that. As long as we pass this by the end of the year, I'm.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. Councilman Kraus, then Councilman Coghill. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know who was responsible for distributing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm, thank you for doing this. I did read it. But I think it's really important to, to draw the public's attention to an editorial that appeared in the Post Gazette on December twentieth. And it, it's entitled, Limiting Pittsburgh Traffic Stops Will Make the City Safer. And one of the arguments that I truly believe is really at the heart and soul of this bill is that it doesn't just protect the, the constituent, it protects the police officers as well. There are two people engaged in a traffic stop, at least two entities engaged in a traffic stop. Pittsburgh City Council is considering following the lead of Philadelphia and the state of Virginia by banning traffic stops for secondary offenses. Contrary to the proposal's critics, we believe this change will actually make the city safer. I'm editing this for time. Traffic stops are a high-stress, high-adrenaline moment for everyone involved. This is especially true for black motorists who are pulled over at disproportionately higher rates, especially for minor or secondary offenses. Reducing the number of high-stake interactions for low-stake offenses isn't about wokeness or lenience or indifference to the law. Rather, it is a common sense and low-risk way to improve the relationship between police officers and the people they serve. Further, the new rule won't stop police from pulling over drivers whom they have good cause to suspect of a more serious crime. This isn't the first step towards ignoring vandalism or shoplifting, as some critics might have done out of a false sense of justice. Nor is it a first step toward defunding police. In fact, it, it should liberate city police to focus on more important work rather than risking a violent confrontation to cite a teenager for a busted bumper. No one, police or civilian, should be in a life-or-death situation because of paperwork. Ending traffic stops for secondary offenses is a practical move to improve public safety. I, I signed onto this bill when the councilman introduced it. I do believe it is the absolute right thing to do. This is not a defunder and anti-police. I believe a bill like this protects both the officer and the, the constituent that's engaged and offers an opportunity for de-escalation. So I will support it regardless of how long it takes to, to pass.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. And I first want to start by thanking you, Councilman Burgess, and just for working with me on it. I was uncomfortable with the speed of this, okay? I think there's a lot of questions still. In order to spare us the conversation later, I don't care to comment on it, but I will tell council now while, you know, we're all at the table here. After recommitting it, we will have next week to vote on it. If at that time you feel that you do not find it necessary to have a public hearing or a post-agenda, I will accept that. And, you know, I probably will not be supportive of it, but I will accept it. I think the data and the facts point us to the real problems, the disproportionate amount of black Pittsburgh that is pulled over by our police. I think that's what we need to focus on. Councilwoman Gross brought up an excellent point last week in the way of compounding fine after fine or, you know, increasing steps that make it harder for people to comply who are pulled over. I would like to get some facts on that. So that's real police reform to me. So the only reason why I asked Councilman Burgess to recommit this was because I want this council just to think about it for one week. I'm not going to lobby. You know, originally I was going to have a post-agenda in a public hearing and try to squeeze it in this week, but I want to spare us of that as well. So what I'm asking for is just to think about it. If you think this time next week that you're comfortable in passing this without a public hearing, I'll accept it. My district tells me differently. They want to comment on it. They want to talk about it before we go instituting a law that changes a hundred and fifty years of the way police did their duties. I think there's also legal ramifications that need to be answered as well. So, so with that, you know, again, we have a long day. I'm not interested in talking about it later. I just wanted to give my concerns here. And I hope this council thinks about it for a week, and if you're comfortable at that point, fine, well, okay. But I just felt it was being rushed without being, you know, properly thought out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, okay, any other members? Or Councilman Lavelle, did you have your hand up? I apologize.
My, my apologies. I had to step out for a second. Was, was there a motion that was actually made? Were, are we discussing a motion?
Motion to recommit.
Okay. And we're discussing it. Thank you.
More, but we have to vote on the recommittal too. So we're just discussing. Thank you, Councilman.
From my perspective, Councilman, with all due respect, if you're actually not going to spend a week lobbying members, if you're actually not going to try to convince us otherwise, then for me, it doesn't make sense to recommit a bill that every other member has already expressed a willingness to support. I'm certainly wanting to have a post-agenda, have a public hearing. We can have the conversation. For me, nothing will change. I just, as I was coming back in, I heard Councilman Kraus say nothing will change. So if nothing will change and you're not actually going to spend time lobbying, if you, if your intent was to lobby, that would make some sense to me. But if we're not going to spend time trying to lobby members to do something that members have already expressed a willingness to do, then a recommittal actually doesn't make sense to me. I think we should vote it through. I think we should continue to have the conversation that Councilman Coghill wishes to have, and we can have however many post-agendas. I have a lot of thoughts as well. And we can also continue the work of trying to figure out why disproportionately African-Americans are being pulled over. That is additional reform that needs to take place within our community. But for me, I think it makes sense to vote this, move it forward, and then continue to have that important conversation the councilman is suggesting we need to.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Councilman Coghill.
Yeah. Well, just in response to that, my lobbying was just done right here, okay? In the way of, I want council to think it through. That's all. I just want one more week. I know Reverend Burgess is determined to pass this before the end of the year. I'm fine with that. However, what I want you to think about is, are there legal ramifications in doing so? Police officer is sworn to duty to uphold state vehicle code. Do we need a law opinion? Should we have a public hearing? That's the extent of my lobbying, Councilman, I will tell you. I am just comfortable in thinking we should take just one week to think about that before we vote this through. There are questions there. I have lots of questions. I could, we could force a post-agenda this week and try to get through these. I'm not interested in doing that. I just want to make sure that this council is fully confident of any questions. And I'll bring those questions up later if, if we need to, but I don't know what the difference is between now and next week. My lobbying is done now. I just want council to think it through and, you know, decide next week if it's the proper thing to do without a public hearing or without a law opinion. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross first round, and then we'll come back. Did, were you just asking a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President. And it's, I think it's something we forget that often when two people are disagreeing with each other or many, you know, several members are disagreeing with each other, it really gets fruitful conversations. So even at the table last week when we brought up the issue, it was Councilman Coghill, who had the numbers by race of the fifty-two thousand traffic stops in the last three years, I think it was, and that forty percent of those traffic stops were to black Pittsburghers. But then also in conversation, Councilman Coghill brought up the fact that it is a problem that also deserves our attention that our police officers are required to serve any outstanding warrants after they've done the traffic stop. And we've also learned, I've learned from my district magistrate, McPappas, who's brought a lot of attention to the problems of bonds and bail at magistrate's offices, that sometimes those warrants are just for court debt. Those warrants might even be for the compounded citations that perhaps we actually also issued. And we have a lot of activists at the county level or county council members, colleagues, drawing attention to the fact that there are people serving time in Allegheny County Jail purely for court debt or including these kinds of compounded citations. And so that we seem to have this vicious cycle where we're really just penalizing people for being poor. And that, that also deserves attention. And we wouldn't have gotten that conversation to this table without disagreeing about this bill. So I'm, I'm, I think it's actually worthy. I don't know where the conversations will lead us in the next week, but at least it keeps us in front of us so that we're having these conversations now and not getting distracted with other things and not getting back to them. So I'm worthy, I'm definitely happy to support the recommittal. Again, I've, it's already, we had additional conversations, Councilman Coghill and I, about trying to untangle that other issue where we, we don't want to be penalizing our residents just for being poor, that we may actually be complicit in doing that through some of our ordinances. So I, I'm definitely willing to support the recommittal and, and the conversation, even if we don't all agree on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess.
For me, in the spirit of just, I, I think people have a chance to talk. I have no problem with talking, you know, and make people comfortable as long as we pass it by the end of the year. I will say something that I learned during this whole conversation that I did not learn until this. It's something, because he mentioned it, I'll talk about it later this afternoon. The police are sworn to uphold the penal code, not the motor vehicle code. The motor vehicle code is given to council. Council empowers the police to enforce the motor vehicle code. So it is, is literally our authority they use to do it. They do not inherently have that authority. That's why we're able to do this legislation, because the authority of the motor vehicle code is a, is a legislative process, not a criminal, it's not a criminal process. It's different. And so I just wanted to say that. That's how, that's why we are able to do it. But I, I didn't know that. I always thought, I thought that too. I thought the motor vehicle code was, was, was the same thing as the criminal code, that police had this sort of inherent right to do it. I didn't know until doing the research and reading and having this longer conversation, that's actually a council function. I was surprised to figure that out myself. We kind of find out, found that out by accident. But so having these conversations though does make, so I'm, I'm supportive. I just, I just hope for, and have asked members, if I said from the beginning in my conversations, I also want to thank the president who has been, you know, talking with the three, with both of us during all weekend through this process, that as long as it passes through the end of the year, I'm comfortable with waiting and giving everyone a chance to, to have their conversation.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I have been looking at what we've been sent by the Crime Analysis Unit from the city of Pittsburgh. And so someone can definitely challenge me if I'm wrong in reading what I'm looking at, but I've been looking through this. But the, the one chart that stands out to me is the one that takes secondary traffic violations and looks at arrest rates by race from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. In twenty sixteen, eighty-two percent. Basically, it's, there, there are numbers, and they're not as great as we would think they are. But in twenty sixteen, eighty-two percent were black that were arrested. I only counted for nine, and still it's nine. We don't know what that, what that all means, but as we go through the years, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there is a dip from twenty seventeen, but then that goes from forty-five percent all the way up to a hundred percent for twenty twenty-one. So just from twenty twenty, there was seventy-nine percent of the people arrested on a, on a second, secondary traffic violation, which is this legislation, seventy-nine percent were black. And then twenty twenty-one, a hundred percent at twelve. So, you know, I mean, I, I know that this isn't going to solve the whole issue of the racial disparity since black and brown only make up twenty-two percent of the Pittsburgh's population, but it does get us all talking, doesn't it? I press every member of council to review that, that, that great analysis by our, our crime analysis unit. And I'm looking forward to that conversation.
Let the piece send over by Zoe Birch this morning. I can't read it on my phone as we're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, thank you for bringing that forward.
And once again, we should look into why that's happening, and I think this is a, a good start.
Councilman Kraus, did you have anything else? Okay, Councilman Coghill.
No, I, you know, I would just want to back up what Councilman Burgess said. My uncomfortable in the speed in which we're doing this, I turn to our council president, and I want to thank you for your leadership. I really do, you know. For you to just try to, you know, mediate between myself and Councilman Burgess, I know is not an easy thing to do by any means. But I also want to reiterate what Councilwoman Gross said. You know, the fact that we're talking about this is a good thing. We, between these nine members, are going to find the right common sense things to do in all phases. There are so many different phases of police reform. I love that we're talking about these issues right now. I want to be on the front lines of this. I really do. I want this council to have confidence in my knowledge of this difficult subject. I also want to have confidence in council, the rest of council as to, we're going to be doing it responsibly, and we should do it with caution. When we, when we, when we talk about changing the way police have done things for a hundred and fifty years, you know, I just feel like we should do it with caution and be very careful as to how we do it and vet any questions that might be asked. So with that, I'm really glad the, the conversation has started. I'm looking forward to the new administration coming in to be part of these conversations. And again, Madam President, I just really wanted to thank you for your leadership in this.
Thank you. I want to thank both of you for working together all weekend long. Is there anything else from other members? So I want to thank you both for working on this together all weekend long. People think you, we come in here on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and we go home. They don't realize this, these jobs are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Our phones ring literally in the middle of the night. And this weekend was no different, but it was the two of you working really well together, conference calls, conversations. And, and I just want to thank you both for working through this, and that's one of the reasons I'm willing to recommit it because the two of you came to an agreement in that, in that regard. And I know that separately on the bill and on the recommittal, I think that, you know, we, I've watched us re-amend by substitutions, rewrite entire bills. Councilman Wilson just did that with the parking legislation. And we know when something's not right, we change it. And I, I have no doubt that if something's not okay, if it's detrimental to the public or to this community, we're going to change it. And so I want to thank you guys, everyone, for working through things, but to also let the public know that we are always amending and changing things, and there's no need to think that something is permanent just because we, we pass something or don't pass something. But to Councilwoman, woman gross, or first Councilman Cross, I have to tell you, when you read the PG article, I make a habit not to govern according to news articles. But I do appreciate that article, and I do appreciate what was said. But I also think, you know, Councilman... and I do appreciate what was said. But I also think, you know, Councilman Coghill also presents some, some serious statistics that I think we need to look at. But I think all of us want to make sure that our residents feel safe on the streets, right? No matter what your race is, no matter what your gender, no matter what your ethnicity, we want people to feel safe. But we also don't want our, our officers to feel unsafe or feel unsupported by us. So because of that, I think we're all willing to sit down and have a longer, broader conversation. Councilman Coghill, over the weekend, said, "We've had post agendas and public hearings of red-tailed snakes," or something like that. He said, "But something as significant as this, we're just willing to pass without a conversation." And he had a valid point. I mean, we really should have a broader conversation. But when Councilwoman Gross mentioned about the warrants, one of the things that came to mind was we also, our police also issue warrants for people in domestic violence situations. And so I would hate for us to have some unintended consequences. My son, who's a police officer in Virginia, sent me a story about someone who was found, who was abducted, and that was found in a basic minor traffic stop. And I said, "But that, I understand that, and I appreciate that." But I think that we cannot negate the fact that there are people that feel very unsafe on our streets, and we want to make sure that we can work together. I honestly think that when I look at the police efforts for, all the efforts we do with reaching out to the community and police community relationship building, and yet this is still how a lot of our public feels, I'm thinking we need to revisit that whole effort, to be honest with you. I think, you know, we're doing a lot in that area, and it looks great on, in photos, and it looks great with what we're saying and doing. But the reality is, and we may not have enough officers to do this, I think that we're failing in this area of building the relationships in the black community where people may be pulled over or may feel unsafe. And I think that, that we have to make a better effort and, and a better plan in that area. I don't know what that looks like, to be honest with you, but I think we, I think these conversations are worth having. With that said, any, any further discussion on the amended bill or the recommittal? Madam Clerk, do we do a voice vote on this? Rule call. Okay, rule call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. And I just, to the end of that, I'm going to form a task force to work on police reform with members in the new administration coming in. Okay? Yes.
I'd love to be part of that.
Yes, I would love for you to be part of that. Yeah. I already, I already have some people in mind for that one. So thank you. With that said, now, all in favor of the passage of the bills?
I have one comment on another bill, if I may.
Yes.
Briefly, I swear to God, briefly, 2279 is our annual expenditure of $1.1 billion to humane animal rescue, to euthanize perfectly healthy, adoptable animals. Please, for God's sake, spay and neuter. We have a free program in the city. You can have your animals spayed and neutered for free. Please, please make use of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Councilman?
Just quickly, again, because it's a long day, I don't want to even, I don't even need to discuss. I know we'll vote it through so we can have a final vote at standing committee later, as far as the police bill goes, okay? So I'm done with it unless anybody else has anything to add. You know, expect us to vote final on it next week, and if you decide to pass at that point, then it's fine.
Thank you, Councilman. And the other members? Okay, Madam Clerk, the bills are having, I'm sorry. The bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote, aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. What did I do? Did I miss his? Councilman Coghill, I apologize, I missed you. You've talked enough.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. This is not my day today. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2353, Report of the Committee on Public Works for December 15, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1744, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a License Agreement with Vips Conservatory and Botanical Garden for the city facility known as the Garden Center for a period of 10 years, an annual rental fee of $1 per year, with the possibility of renewal. Bill Number 2266, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Parking, Chapter 541, General Parking Regulations, by revising the title of Section 44104, Passenger in Loading Zones to Section 54104A, by adding a new section, 54104B, entitled Smart Loading Zones, and by adding a new section, 54104C, entitled Smart Loading Zone Rates and Penalties. Bill Number 2283, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing, Resolution Number 863, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $575,000 from the Four Mile Run Project to Street Resurfacing. Bill Number 2284, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing, Resolution Number 647, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $250,000 from Sylvane Avenue, Bike Ped Connection, and Hazelwood Complete Street Improvement to Street Resurfacing.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, no zeros.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now that takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2354, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for December 15, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2094, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning Article Five, Chapter 912, Accessory Uses and Structures, Section 91204, Accessory Use and Structure Development and Operational Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access, Section 91407, Alternate Access Plans, Chapter 925, Measurements, Section 92506, Setbacks, to Update the Standard for Fences and Walls, Parking Paths, and Garages for Residential Uses, With Fewer Than Five Spaces and Other Accessory Uses and Structures. Bill Number 2095, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning Article Five, Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, Section 91102, Use Table in Section 91104, Use Standard, Chapter 912, Accessory Uses and Structures, Section 91204, Accessory Use and Structure Development and Operational Standards, Chapter 913, Use Exception and Conditions Not Listed in the Use Table, Section 91304, Special Exception in Article Seven, Article Six, sorry, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking Zone and Access, Section 91402, Off-Street Parking Schedules, to Update the Standards and Definitions for Restaurants and Restaurants Fast Food Uses, and to Update the Standards for Other Drive-Thru Uses Within the City. Bill Number 2096, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zoning Article Nine, Development Review Procedures, Chapter 922, Measurements, by Amending Language in Section 92202.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that takes us on to Councilwoman Strasburg, I believe. Yes, Councilwoman Strasburg, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilman Wilson for Councilwoman of Strasburg. It was called her Councilwoman O'Connor. I'm having a day.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2355, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for December 15, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2285, Resolution Amending Resolution 725, by Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works and Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Amended Agreement with Carthograph Systems, Inc., to Extend the Agreement for Three and One Half Years, to Meet the Needs of the City at an Additional Sum Not to Exceed $731,593.75.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that takes us on to our last committee of the day, is with Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2356, Report of the Committee to Intergovernmental Affairs for December 15, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1852, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, into the Publicly Owned Property in the 20th Ward of the City, Designated in the Registry Office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Two, Tefur Avenue, Southwest Side of the South of Sherwood Avenue. Bill Number 2267, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Proposed Project Located at 227 through 229, 231 through 231 and a half, North Aitken Avenue. Bill Number 2332, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000 for Step Repair.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Gross, the bill 1852 with Zephyr Avenue?
Yes.
I thought we held that for four weeks.
It was on last week's agenda, Madam President. I'm sorry.
I apologize. Can we, can you make a motion to recommit that? I think I'm going to table that.
I would be happy to.
Can we table it now?
Can we table a final vote?
Can we do it now? Okay.
Be committed to standing committee table it there.
Then table. So, yeah.
Madam President, Motion to Recommit Bill 1852 to appear on today's standing committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are recommitted. Thank you, Councilwoman. And now on the rest of the bills. Is there any discussion on the, on the remaining bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Ms. Gross? Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold our last standing committee's meeting of 2021, chaired by Councilman LaBelle. Speaker registration closes at 12:30 p.m. today. To register, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. On Wednesday, December 22, at 1:30 p.m., council will host a cable cast public hearing on Bill 1815 as it relates to the Hazelwood-Green specially planned district. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 11:30 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Offices will be closed this Friday, December 24, in observance for Chris, for the Christmas holiday. Merry Christmas to everyone. Next week, council will hold our last, our last regular meeting of 2021 on Tuesday, December 28, at 10 a.m. To register, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Do we have anything from members? I just want to thank you all for this, for this, for this year and for working together. I think we show how united we are as a council when we work through serious and significant issues where we have such very different opinions, but we do so respectfully and understand that it's okay to disagree as long as we're respectful. Anything else from members? Councilman Coghill?
I would just say, I think it has a lot to do with you and your inner, you know, Mick, hearing all sides and being an effective president. So I wanted to thank you again for that.
Thank you, Councilman. And can we have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.